Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin after a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City of Sioux Falls City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on initial development plans or alternative plans are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a rezoning. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first City Council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 6:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. By approving the consent agenda, the Commission is approving the items on consent. Therefore, upon approval of the agenda, those members of the public in attendance for those items are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item, by first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on CityLink or is available at any time at sioufals.org. Thank you for your cooperation. Good evening, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to order. I would like to emphasize a couple of additional items. Out of courtesy for everyone, please silence all electronic devices at this time. We look forward to hearing your testimony tonight, and we appreciate all of you joining us. In an effort to have sufficient time to hear from audience members, we ask that when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Please also limit your comments to five minutes or less to allow everybody here tonight the opportunity to speak. At this time, we'll consider the consent agenda. Before we do, I believe we have a couple of commissioners that have some recusals. If so, please state. Thank you, Commissioner Paulson.
Mr. Chair, I also have a recusal request.
Thank you, Commissioner Nissas. Denise, please read the items on the consent agenda at this time.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 1, approval of minutes 1A is Planning Commission briefing of Tuesday, July 6, 2021. Item 1B is Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July 7, 2021. Item 2A is petition REZONE 014729, 2021, rezoning from the Recreation and RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District located south of West 85th Street and east of South Pinewood Avenue. Item 2B, petition REZONE 014734, 2021, rezoning from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the I-1 Light Industrial District located south of West Madison Street and east of North Ebenezer Avenue. Item 2C, petition REZONE 014746, 2021, rezoning from the Agriculture to the RS Single Family Residential RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential, RD2 Town Home Residential and Conservation, south of West Maple Street and west of North Valley View Road. Item 2D, petition REZONE 014774, 2021, REZONE from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, LW Live Work, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, and CN Conservation Districts to the C2 Neighborhood Commercial LW Live Work, RA3 Residential Apartments High Density, RD2 Residential Suburban Town Homes, RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts, and CN Conservation Districts located at 2301 North Marion Road. Item 2E, Plan Unit Development 014756, 2021, Plan Unit Development, additional development plan amendment for updated plans located at 1305 West 18th Street. Item 2F, Subdivision Plan 014745, 2021, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for Jefferson Heights Second Edition located south of West Maple Street and west of North Valley View Road. Item 3, Consent Agenda Approval.
Thank you very much, Denise. Are there any objections from audience members on any of the foregoing items? In other words, if there's anything that anybody would like to have discussion on out of those items that were just read, please come forward at this time. Yes, please come up and state which item you'd like to discuss.
Yes, I'm interested in the second one, the 2A, petition REZ, rezoning of 85th Street, Pinewood Edition.
Very good, 2A. Thank you. Go ahead and take a seat. I'll have a commissioner remove that, and we'll have discussion on that. Thank you. Any other items that anybody from the audience would like to have discussed? Seeing none, commissioners, is there any items that you would like to have pulled from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none, I'll like a motion to have item 2A removed from the consent agenda and then approval also.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioners, any further discussion on consent agenda items excluding item 2A? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. The consent agenda, except for item 2A, has been approved. If you were here to discuss any of those items, feel free to leave at this time. We will now move on to the regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve of the regular agenda?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes. If I can have somebody make the motion with the addition of item 2A, I would appreciate that.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion to approve of the regular agenda as amended to include item 2A. Let's take a vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. The regular agenda has been approved. Denise, please read the first item on the regular agenda.
Item 2A, petition REZONE 014729, 2021, rezoning from the Recreation and RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District located south of West 85th Street and east of South Pinewood Avenue.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Jason Bieber with Representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Mike Bender with Bender Commercial. The owners are the Deff and Baus. It's located at the southeast corner of West 85th Street and South Pinewood Avenue. As you can see on the map here, it was proposed to be a residential subdivision with roughly six lots, and then the section that was zoned REC they were going to utilize as kind of a neighborhood pool for the existing six lots there. Since that time, the owners of the property have decided not to pursue that residential subdivision. They're looking to sell it, so that's why they come before you, to remove that little recreation portion and get that entire lot to be zoned single-family residential. So staff does recommend approval of this specific application.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioners, any questions tonight for Jason on this item? Seeing none, thank you, Jason. We'll pull up the applicant here. Is the applicant here? Please state your name and tell us about the project.
Good afternoon, good evening. Michael Bender, 305 West 57th Street, and I concur with Jason's recommendation. We're just trying to remove the common area and just sell individual lots and not have a common pool or a common playground. And so it just didn't make sense to have this RC in the middle of the lots.
Thank you, Michael. Commissioners, any questions for Michael tonight? None at this time. This time, we'll open the floor to public input. Anybody from the public that has a comment on this item, please come forward. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Jeff Gould, 47347, 85th Street, right next to that property. I'm assuming that once that happens, that how many lots and what the size of the lots, that would be in a different meeting at a different time. Is that correct? All right. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. Any other public input tonight? Seeing none, we will close the floor to public input. I'll look for commissioner action.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second. Commissioners, any further discussion on item 2A tonight? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on this item. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. Item 2A has passed. Denise, please read the next item.
Item 5A is a conditional use permit, 014749, 2021, conditional use permit for three digital billboards larger than 288 square feet located north of East Arrowhead Parkway and east of South Veterans Parkway.
The applicant here is Will Brizika. The owner is Tom Heine. It's located at the northeast corner of East Arrowhead Parkway and north Veterans Parkway. It's roughly about 42 and a half acres in size. The applicant is requesting to replace, there's three existing billboards on the site. They're static and wood at this time. They're requesting to replace those with digital billboards up to the maximum of 672 square feet. They are allowed to do 288 square feet, but they are requesting that conditional use to be able to do the maximum size that's allowed under ordinance. This is an example of the billboard that they would be looking to place on the lot, and there would be three of them. City staff looked at this, looked at this existing corridor, and you can see from this map here, we looked at I-229 all the way over to Veterans Parkway, really looked at all the existing billboards on that, and really wanted to hone in on what's existing on that corridor and be consistent with pretty much everything along Arrowhead Parkway. As you can see, there's 18 signs located on that corridor from 229 all the way to Veterans Parkway. Seventeen out of the 18 of them are 288 square feet or less. There is one large billboard on 12th and Sycamore, just west of Sycamore Avenue, that's 672 square feet. However, that was approved prior to Shape Places taking effect and prior to the Billboard Opportunity Task Force that they had done probably about five years ago. Therefore, since that existing corridor is predominantly 288 square feet and less, and typically we like to reserve those 672 square feet billboards for our fast-moving corridors like I-29, I-90, and I-229, staff is recommending denial of this specific application. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioners, any questions for Jason on this item 5A tonight? None at this time. Thank you, Jason. Can I get the applicant to come forward? Please state your name and address. Tell us about the project.
Thank you. My name is Zach Nagabauer, 4406 South Northridge Circle.
My name is Doug Moth, 7329 South Russett Avenue.
Thank you, Zach and Doug. Can you tell us about the project a little bit?
Yeah, thank you. So first off, thanks for having us tonight. We really appreciate it. Doug and I are business partners. We have a locally-owned billboard company called Book Your Billboard here in Sioux Falls. And I just want to make one correction. I know we originally applied for three locations to be upsized. This map is kind of helpful. This property is called the Heins Property. It flanks the northeast corner of Veterans Parkway and 10th Street, and currently it's a 48 property that holds five valid billboard permits. These current permits are 288 total square feet, which typically are 12 by 24 feet in size. And we're actually asking, these are the four of the five permits up here on the screen. In red, we're asking just to leave those as is. It's the yellow one on the main corner of Veterans Parkway and 10th Street. So just one of the five permits we would like to upsize to the larger size, just for that clarification. You know, one of the things I would say is, you probably are saying, well, where do you typically see the 14 by 48s? And as Jason alluded to, you commonly see them on the intersections or on the interstates of I-29 and 229 throughout Sioux Falls. The good majority of the billboards in these roads are larger in size. These larger-sized billboards are often granted, from my understanding, for public safety, for faster speeds and higher acceleration. When people are accelerating and driving faster, it can be a hazard to have to focus on a smaller billboard for a point of interest or a message. This particular billboard on this corner, I kind of call it the gateway, if you will, to the brand-new road that takes you out to I-90. And the speeds, you know, begin after you cross the intersection to ramp up to a max speed of 55 miles an hour. So I think in some aspects, this, you know, hits that rationale for higher speeds, better visibility, having those larger boards to make it easier to read. The other point that we would ask you to consider is just the general area of where this billboard is located. This is a highly, you know, high-traffic, high-visibility, big-box retail area development. The state of South Dakota is predicting within five to 10 years, this intersection will be one of the busiest intersections in the state of South Dakota, maybe even busier than 41st and Louise. And so I just want to point out a few other areas in Sioux Falls that you see these larger 14 by 48 billboards in these kind of bigger-box, heavy-retail areas. So up on the screen, I have 41st and Louise. You'll see a 14 by 48 on that intersection. And excuse my typo here, this is correct. 10th and Sycamore, which is one of the 18 locations, that is that larger size, is a 14 by 48, obviously a highly-traffic, big-box retail area. And then we have 26 and Sycamore, or, excuse me, this is my typo, 26 and Minnesota Avenue by Colliotties. Above Colliotties, you'll see the larger 14 by 48. I just want to talk a little bit about those developments. You know, I currently live in the Tamar Hills area, which is 57 in Cliff neighborhood, and I have a neighbor who's older, and he said, hey, when I first moved in, it was all cornfields, and this was like out of town, which is kind of hard to imagine, right? So kind of going back to that 26 and Minnesota location, back then, that was a very prominent intersection in Sioux Falls, taking into downtown, to our McKenna Park neighborhood, to our hospital systems. And so at that time, you know, it seemed, the city deemed it made sense for a larger, highly-visible billboard on that intersection. And then going to 10th and Sycamore, kind of the, at the time, the kind of the end of the east side of Sioux Falls, all of our big-box retail with Shopko and Lewis Drug and Ace Hardware, and they put a bigger billboard, 14 by 48, on that intersection, being the highly-visible, highly-retail commercial area. And then, of course, 41st and Louise, I think that was less, a little bit less than 15 years ago, the busiest intersection in our state, 14 by 48 in that. And I would say, it's our opinion that this current intersection on Veterans Parkway and 10th Street is very similar. This is a heavily, highly-trafficked area, big-box retail center, and I think it matches very well with what's been done in the past. The other thing I just wanted to touch on is the changing traffic patterns in Sioux Falls. As Sioux Falls continues to grow, we're seeing the future of big-box developments moving further out. For example, developments like Lake to Rain, Dolly Farms, 85th and Minnesota. Along with that shift of the corners of Sioux Falls, the big boxes kind of moving to, we're also seeing these traffic patterns significantly change throughout the city. Traffic is slowly declining on some of the staple roads like Minnesota Avenue and 41st Street, and it's significantly growing in some of these newer parts of Sioux Falls, where you're seeing these big-box developments, similar to where this billboard is at. When you consider the millions of dollars investment businesses have into these new big-box retail developments, and what that means for the growth of the city, it's important, we feel, to reflect on the success of these older developments that have had these larger billboards. For the last three consecutive years, digital billboard advertising has been in a top-five national growth sector in advertising in the entire country. You're seeing this huge increase in internet advertising, a slow decrease in TV and radio. So businesses are really having a hard time finding a way to localize a message to the consumer. They need a way to tell someone, like, turn here now, you know, maybe it's a hotel, and they have openings and they want you to turn in, right? Or maybe it's a gas station that has a sale on milk, and they're trying to, you know, catch the consumer to buy some milk before they go home. Or maybe it's a restaurant that has a happy hour special. These are all examples of localized messages in the area that businesses can't always get with internet advertising, and it's getting harder to reach those consumers as they're driving. I think it's important that traffic patterns and big-box developments move to the corners of Sioux Falls, that we're careful not to limit billboards, because they really play a key role in the development of these businesses and their ability to reach those consumers. You know, lastly, we want to touch on the single-family and multifamily housing. You know, after the moratorium, it's kind of my impression, I think, one of the main goals was to be more thoughtful where we place billboards, that we don't have a billboard right behind someone's deck, that we're careful to, you know, limit where single-family and multifamily housing, and we really agree with that. I think that makes a ton of sense. And, you know, this particular development is not close to a housing development. I think the closest housing development is three-quarters of a mile away. So it's a long ways away. When you look at 41st and Louise and 10th and Sycamore, there's housing, apartment developments within a few blocks. So it's much more, I think, appropriate and proportionate to the intentions of that new zoning with the moratorium. You know, lastly, just want to kind of touch on those four main points, you know, again, with, you know, public safety and the speeds increasing as you head northbound, I think it's appropriate to have that larger sign. I think there's a precedent the city set forth in these major development areas to have these larger signs that they fit very well within what we've done. They've helped businesses advertise appropriately to those traffic patterns. And then, lastly, you know, the single-family and multifamily, again, this is a lot further away than what we've had in the past, and I think it fits in very nicely with the intentions. There are a couple of small houses still on that 40-acre parcel, and the two neighbors there are supportive of this measure as well. So.
Thank you, Zach. Any questions tonight, commissioners, for Zach or Doug? None at this time. Thank you for coming. At this moment, we'll open the floor to public input on this item. Anybody here tonight that would like to speak to this item? Hearing none, I will close the floor to public input on this item. I'll look for commissioner action.
I'll move for approval, as amended by the applicant, to be just the single sign to the larger 672 square feet, as indicated by them.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioners, further discussion on this item tonight?
Mr. Chair, I think they did a great job of describing what's going on around town at the major intersections. Where at first, when I saw it, I was, you know, kind of a little hesitant on that, but they did explain throughout town that it has been done. And I think dropping down to that one location makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukey. Commissioners, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote on this item. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. That item has passed 6 to 0. Denise, please read the next item on the agenda.
Item 5B, petition and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City by adopting medical cannabis zoning regulations.
Thank you, Denise. Jason, the floor is yours.
All right. This is our ordinance amendment proposal for medical cannabis. That's coming before you tonight. Just to kind of run through a little bit of kind of the timeline that we went through with this specific ordinance, and IM26 Task Force was created, and that included two Lincoln County Commissioners, two Minnehaw County Commissioners, one City of Sioux Falls Council member, and then the Chief of Staff for the City of Sioux Falls. We did have, and then various staff members obviously attended that to provide any kind of expertise or draft documents that they wanted. We did have three meetings, June 23rd, July 7th, and July 21st, and that was really where a lot of what you will see tonight has come out of. So the IM26 Task Force discussion topics, really what we looked at is, which uses are we going to allow in Sioux Falls and also that joint jurisdiction area? And those four uses were dispensaries, testing facilities, manufacturing of cannabis, and the cultivation of cannabis. We also looked at which zoning districts to allow them. Do you allow them in agricultural, commercial, industrial, residential, pretty much considered all, obviously residential was pretty much off the table at the beginning. Also, we considered separation distances. Should these be separated from certain uses? And what are those specific uses? And then, we really honed in on what's the distance between them. So how far does it need to be from a use that we feel is sensitive? They considered, you know, zero feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, pretty much any number you could throw out there was part of our discussion topic. And then, one of the other things that we needed to discuss is really to be consistent with both counties and the cities, where to measure that from, and what do you use, property line to property line, building to property line, building to building. And so we really talked about that. And then also, one of the other considerations was, what distance between cannabis facilities? Can they be right next to each other? Did we want to separate them so there's not a big concentration in one specific area? Next, we talked about uses permitted. Is it a permitted use? Is it a permitted special use? Is there going to be a conditional use option, a public hearing, if you wanted to not meet the separation distances at that time? And then, obviously, other topics, specifically having to do with the licensing, that wouldn't be your guys' purview, the licensing ordinance that would come through City Council here in the next couple of weeks. So completely different ordinance on that. So out of that task force, what we have in front of you is what the City of Sioux Falls is proposing for medical cannabis ordinance, just our City of Sioux Falls, not the two joint jurisdiction areas that we will be meeting on in the couple of weeks, that you guys will be part of that. So within this City of Sioux Falls, within our city limits, it was decided that we would allow two of the cannabis uses, dispensary and testing. The zoning districts that we would allow them in for dispensaries, it'd be C2, C3, C4, F2 PUD, PO PUD, and the I-1 zoning districts. The testing facilities would be allowed in all of those, and also the I-2 zoning districts, some of those larger industrial districts like Foundation Park and things like that. Separation distances, like I said, we considered zero to 1,000 to 2,000, pretty much everything in between. Our proposal to you is 1,000 feet from sensitive land uses, and as we know, because we deal with it with alcohol, those sensitive land uses include churches, schools, daycares, public use facilities, and then also single-family and townhome forms. And then also, we decided on, between dispensaries and testing facilities, they need to be separated by 1,000 feet. From that, those uses, if you can meet all those conditions, you're allowed to go through, and then you would be going through the licensing, the next licensing aspect that obviously will come later and not part of this specific ordinance. Then, city staff did add in there, for medical cannabis and dispensary or testing facilities, a conditional use permit option. And that would be if you wanted to be closer to those sensitive land uses, between 599 feet. So if you were less than 1,000, but not less than 500, you would be able to come before the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit application. Some standards that we added in there, hey, if you're not going to meet the 1,000-feet separation, we need better barriers, we need better aesthetics of the building, topography, additional buffer yards, similar to what we handle when we do on sale alcohol next to single-family. And then, that COP option would not be allowed for specific dispensary to dispensary, so they still would have to be separated by 1,000 feet. There wouldn't be the option to be able to come for a conditional use permit to you guys, or then appeal to the City Council. So with that specific criteria, we did create, our JS Department did create some maps for us. As you can see here, this is for the medical cannabis dispensary. The areas in the dark green, those are areas that would be allowed to go, those would meet 1,000 feet from those sensitive land use. And just to give you a little disclaimer, this map is for reference only. Obviously, we'd still need you to submit applications and make sure that there's not any additional sensitive land uses that are in that area. And then, that light-green area, those would be places that they could go with an approval of a conditional use permit from this board, and then ultimately... of a conditional use permit from this board, and then ultimately possibly the City Council. Similar map for the medical cannabis testing facilities, really the only addition is it allows those I2 zoning districts up at Foundation Park and then out kind of off of Benson and 229, those other I2 zoning districts in there. So really, the maps are pretty, pretty similar, but it just allows a little bit more options for those testing facilities. And just a little quick timeline on this, if it's recommended for, to move forward to the City Council tonight, first reading on that would be August 17th. And then the second reading and final adoption would be September 7th, council meeting. And that would get us to an October 1st, our October 1st effective date, hopefully in time for when the state comes out with their regulations. So a lot of stuff I just gave you. Happy to answer any questions. We also have Paul from our city's attorney's office here that helps, has been working on this quite a bit, if you have any specific questions on that. But like I said, this is really just the land use portion of it. We're still working on the, the specific licensing and all that different aspects, so.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioners, any questions for Jason or any of the other city staff members here tonight?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Jason, there is an email that was sent out for the county requirement or ordinance that's coming out in the couple of weeks that we're going to be looking at. There's a couple of things on there that are not on here. So hours of operation, security management plan, you can't use in the, the facility. Are these things that we should be looking at, or is that going to be part of your broader ordinance?
A great question. You know, typically, we don't like to throw a lot of those conditions on there because they're already required. And I believe a lot of that stuff that you're referencing is going to be in the license ordinance. Part of, part of that specifically for alcohol, those things are required, they're required to do that security management plan through the police department. So I think those things will be addressed in the, in the other ordinance side of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukey. Commissioners, any questions for Jason, additional thoughts?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. Jason, can you give us a sense of scale in regards to anticipated number of medical cannabis patients, number of potential facilities, scope of the types of, of establishments ultimately? Can you do that for us?
Great question, John. And I've been pondering that myself quite a bit, and I don't know what the, what the answer would be. I mean, it's, if this, if we get approved, if it's going to be two applications, 100, 1,000. I know there's a couple of people from the industry here, they may be able to give you a better idea of, of how many patients they, they expect and maybe what the actual City of Sioux Falls can, can handle for, for the number of establishments. This ordinance obviously kind of helps steer those into specific heavy commercial areas as you can kind of see on the map and kind of keeps them away from, some of our corridors were single family backs up, like 12th Street, Minnesota, 41st Street. So we tried to, tried to keep them away from those residential areas. But that, yeah, I, I'm, be as surprised as you as how many applications we would get, to be honest with you.
I have another question. Three entities, two counties and the city, part of the joint task force, but each ended up with a different number of establishments. What, what drove that, or how do we understand that?
I think every county wanted to handle it a little bit different. And really what the difficulty, Minnehaw is pretty similar to ours with what they allow. Lincoln County did allow, is, is proposing to allow all four of them. Obviously, it hasn't been approved yet in the joint jurisdiction area. Really, the difficulty with that is, is when you have a joint jurisdiction area for zoning, so we, we have that ability to meet with them and approve things jointly with them. However, they are the sole licensing person, so they couldn't switch their license to only allow maybe something different in the joint jurisdiction area. It was a little bit too murky for that. So I think that's why they allowed all four of them, and really, they're allowing them. Some of the other aspects that we would have in the joint jurisdiction areas, there's not a lot of properties zoned, commercial or industrial. So they would have to probably do more of a two-tier system where they'd have to come in and actually rezone the property. And as I kind of indicated at our planning commission briefing, those would all be based on our comprehensive plan where we would expect commercial zoning. We wouldn't expect it in the middle of a, where we are showing residential. So that wouldn't be something we would support. But we tried to, I mean, we came to, we worked pretty well together on the task force, to be honest with you. I think ultimately, we just went a little bit different. They're pretty similar, though.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Paulson. Commissioners, any further questions for Jason? None at this time. Thank you, Jason. We'll open it up to public input at this time. Before we do, I'll provide a couple of reminders. One, you do have five minutes to provide testimony tonight. You'll see a couple of lights in front of you. Green means go, yellow means you have 30 seconds left, and red means done. So please respect the timer tonight. Also, please remember that this is a planning and zoning board, and we are discussing the zoning of dispensaries and testing facilities. So please keep your comments zoning related. Otherwise, we invite your comments tonight. Please come forward at this time. I know the commissioners are excited to hear from everybody. So please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Seth Pirman. I'm the Attorney General for the Flanrews-Santee Sioux Tribe. We were here a couple of weeks ago and met with the planning committee at that point and expressed a few concerns, which I've kind of put into a report, which I'll send to everybody. I did have one typographical error that I do need to fix before I send it to you, so I'll do that after I get done speaking. But again, thank you for your time today. We have a couple of concerns with, with what has been presented in the rule change from the last meeting, although we do think that we're headed in the right direction. Really appreciate everybody's time spent on this so far. The tribe believes that the term, the use of sensitive use in this statute is just inappropriate. If you take a look at, going back to the concept of, of what isn't a, you know, how we, how we got to this point would be like the Cole memorandum and Wilkinson memorandum issued by the Department of Justice stating that these are a few, certain priorities that if they're met, we're not going to enforce federal marijuana laws. And I have those written for you, which I'll get. But the first one is preventing the distribution to, of marijuana to minors. So how do we do that? One, security, licensing, you know, restrictions on who can come in and outside of a dispensary, and a myriad of other things. But one instance where I think that the planning commission is attempting to, to take a look at this is distancing from schools and other facilities. So in, in this read, and sensitive uses includes churches, elementary, middle and high schools, daycare, public use facilities, and parks. And as you can see on the map, it leaves a very, very limited space of, of opportunity for people to open dispensaries. Again, when we take a look at medical marijuana itself, it's important to have some convenience for patients who are suffering from debilitating diseases so that they can effectively get the medicine that they're seeking, which is the overall intent of the IM26. And really, what the people want is access to medicine. What we would suggest is scrapping the idea of utilizing the sensitive use definition and maintaining the use of just the term school. This is consistent with IM26 in section 3420G, 55 subsection 1b2. It provides that there should be a thousand feet distance from schools, and that's it. There's no other reference to any distance markers regarding where a dispensary can be in the actual law itself. Secondarily, it would create medical cannabis and almost a, you know, a prescription type basis of getting medicine to people, even more restrictive than the sale of alcohol and some other establishments. For instance, off sale alcohol is 500 feet beyond schools. On sale alcohol beverage licensing is 500 feet from sensitive uses. And full service restaurants are 200 feet from sensitive uses. And adult use obviously is something that everybody's asking to push back beyond the per-tail of public access, and that's 1,000 feet from sensitive uses. Just to note that video lottery establishments must have on sale liquor to have a license there too. So that's kind of how those go hand in hand. Again, far less than the 500 or 1,000 foot restriction that is being imposed on dispensaries. Secondarily, we believe that including the laboratories in this is completely inappropriate. Laboratories will have even less access from the public to them. Again, there shouldn't be much in the form of any public disturbance at all. So we would recommend that the sensitive use be completely scrapped, including any and all reference to distancing between laboratories. This should be something that the commercial market should allow to basically have laboratories compete against each other. And again, this is a, mostly a commercial interaction between a cultivation facility and a, and a testing laboratory. So it would make sense to have no restrictions there. Again, we thank you for your time. We want to keep in mind that access for patients is the most important thing when putting this together. People want to be able to get marijuana in a timely and efficient basis, and I don't think that what's put in front of us gets that to them. So again, thank you for your time today, and if anybody has any questions, we'd stand by for questions.
Very good. Thank you, Seth. Further public comment tonight? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Ned Horstedt. I'm the Executive Director of the Cannabis Industry Association in the state, representing businesses and entrepreneurs that are excited about this new industry that was created by over 70% of voters. I tend to agree what, with what Seth said, that sensitive uses are not appropriate in this case. And if so, the 1,000-foot separation from them is extreme. I'll point out that 75% of voters roughly throughout Minnehaw and Lincoln County approve this. I have not heard from many that are concerned about having a dispensary or cannabis-related business within a three football field radius around their home. So just looking at this map, a couple of, a couple of other issues. I mean, it says accept K-12 schools. I graduated from Augustana College. I kind of doubt they're going to allow you to put a cannabis business in the middle of their campus. Cemeteries are in there as well. So I guess that's the first thing that I want to mention. Given the wide support that you have amongst your constituents here, and looking at the map, that's clearly less than a half of Sioux Falls where businesses can locate, I, I think it's extreme and needs to be corrected. The one other thing that I'll say, and I'll keep my remarks pretty brief, and, you know, I went to all of the IM26 Task Force meetings. I'm not convinced that they took a lot of our input when they put together this. It has, to Seth's point again, gotten much better than the initial draft that we saw. However, our consistent message through those meetings, both for, you know, banning certain licensing types, I don't, I don't see a reason why Sioux Falls should not allow cultivation facilities or product manufacturing facilities. We have members in other parts of the state, Rapid City, basically anywhere outside of Sioux Falls, that's very excited that Sioux Falls is going to not allow cultivation or extraction businesses within city limits. It's a big market that other people will be able to take advantage of, that Sioux Falls will not be able to get the, the tax revenue on. And then back to distances, what you do when you force folks into these other areas is you create a situation with real estate where, you know, it works really well if you own a lot of like industrial real estate or commercial real estate or something like that. But you end up driving up the cost of goods to a point in the industry where it allows the black market to thrive. I've said there's kind of a narrow path here. On one side, you're selling out, so, so the only people that can get in it are multimillion dollar corporations. The other side of that is cost of goods continues to rise and the black market thrives. So I don't know if this is able to be amended tonight, or if it's a straight up or down vote. If it is a straight up or down vote, I would recommend that you tell staff to maybe get back to work and come up with something more reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Next up, further public comment tonight? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. Emmett Reistroffer. I reside at 915 South Fourth Avenue here in Sioux Falls. Nice to see you all here tonight. I'm going to try my best not to repeat points. You may have also read some of my concerns recently published in the Argus Leader. I came out pretty vocal at the informational meeting at City Council with some of the same concerns you just heard. So tonight, I want to just touch on a couple of things. So when we think of sensitive uses and setbacks, you know, my main question is what are we trying to accomplish? And I guess that's a question you have to answer. But what I'd like to tell you as you ponder that, since I've been in the industry for 10 years, the amount of work that we have put in to be good neighbors and to alleviate concerns of folks who don't know what this is, in all fairness, I understand it's new to some people. We have put in a lot of time and effort creating things called community engagement plans or community impact plans, which I think are more constructive ways of addressing any concerns. Some people might think they're going to smell marijuana if they live near a marijuana store, but actually, we have really incredible odor control technology, and the marijuana's never actually out in the open in the store. It's packaged before it comes to the store, and it stays packaged and sealed until it gets to the patient's home. So that's just one example. There could be a number of conversation points that we can have with folks, but I just want you to know, you know, we do so much to be good neighbors. We've done it for the last 10 years in the 12 or so states where I've worked on this, through community impact plans, community engagement plans, addressing nuisance concerns, any, any of those questions that come up. So I actually do support what the tribe had asked tonight, and I thank them for giving it to you in a formal way of digesting it. I guess I'll offer maybe a potential compromise then, if we can't remove all sensitive uses, which is what I prefer. There's one in particular. I would like to know how many single family dwellings exist in Sioux Falls. I looked on the City of Sioux Falls website, I could find how many permits are issued for new construction, but I can't find that total number. When you look at that total number, we have to be 1,000 feet away from X amount of single family dwellings. To, to me, that's just too excessive of an overreach by government. We have no problem doing conditional use permits, no problem doing community plans, but we want to be accessible to our customers. When I look at this map, honestly, I have no doubt that I'm still going to get to go into business somewhere in Sioux Falls. It's not going to be a location I like. I'll get to go into business. But what I'm concerned about is the dignity and respect of our customers. These sensitive uses, to me, set a new precedent. I don't know what other type of business has these types of setbacks or restrictions. So I feel like we've been put in this category of some sin industry, but really, I encourage you to think of us no different than a pharmacy. They're in the business of selling a controlled substance with high regulations and oversight. We're in the business of selling a controlled substance with high oversight and regulations. So a lot goes into it, and pharmacies are accessible in every neighborhood across Sioux Falls. I think about folks that don't have transportation options, are on a low budget, and to make them drive clear across town to the one store that might get open is discouraging, to say the least. So I'm just asking for an open mind. If we can delay this, I don't think that hurts anything. I don't know if, how many of you have been consulted about this or, or had the opportunity to have this discussion before, but I'd say take a little more time if needed. I know there are other members of City Council that are looking at alternatives closer to the Lincoln County approach. So even if you don't make a decision tonight, I do expect maybe other ordinances could come down the pipeline, maybe even a citizen initiative. We haven't talked about cultivation and manufacturing too much. So I think it is time to start these conversations, doing the research, because this probably won't be the only ordinance before you. I would love if we can get it right one time and, and roll with it. But I just have a feeling there are, are, you know, different forces on council that may have different desires, so maybe it'll be back. But also the map, I'm almost out of time. I just want to point out, it can even be a little misleading on how much green there is on the map. As Ned said, there's a lot of those green areas, when you really dig into them, I mean, we're talking farmland, sometimes we're talking city-owned properties. I mean, you name it, a lot of places that just don't fit for this type of business. Think of us as a pharmacy is, is really what I asked, so I'm out of time and happy to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmett. Appreciate you coming tonight. Next up, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Metley. I'm actually not a resident of Sioux Falls. I'm a resident of Emory, South Dakota. I am, however, the author of IM26, and I wanted to come tonight just to talk to you guys a little bit about the map. So I wrote IM26 as a patient bill. This bill was intended to This bill was intended to create an access point for patients in our state. And I look at this map, and I wonder, what's going to happen for patients that are downtown? What's going to happen to patients in central Sioux Falls? People that are housebound, people that don't have transportation, there's no accessibility for them. One of the things I did write in IM-26 was, the only stipulation that I wrote for separation was 1,000 feet, and that was from schools. I didn't put in churches, I didn't put special use in there. It was intended to only be to separate us from schools, to separate us from children. As somebody who spends a lot of time at Sanford Hospital right now, when I leave my appointment at Sanford Infusion Clinic and I feel like a dumpster fire, I don't want to drive out by the airport to get the medicine that I need before I go home. And I, you know, on my way home, I pass two pharmacies that are kitty-corner from each other on Kiwanis Avenue. I see access points for pharmaceuticals for our patients everywhere, but you are trying to put access points for patients for cannabis in places where we don't go. We don't live in these places, we don't worship in these places, we don't eat in these places, we don't travel to these places. And as Emmett had said, the map is misleading. Some of it is farmland, some of it is city-owned land. It's places that, you know, on a Sunday afternoon, if I'm not feeling well, I don't really feel like, like I said, driving way out by the airport, because I am coming from my home in Emory, so I'm already driving an hour. I just really ask that you guys take a good, hard look at it, not from a business standpoint, but from a need standpoint. People who need medicine run the gamut. Full transparency, I work for the Flanrews and Dusu tribe, and we have been in operation for a month, and I watch the patients that are driving to us that are barely making it in our door, people that are on oxygen. We had a gentleman whose son has cancer, and he has cancer, and we have the cancer-ridden son pushing the cancer-ridden father with an oxygen tank in our door. They've driven an hour and 45 minutes to be there. I don't think that Sioux Falls should do that. I don't think that we should make it any harder for patients to access medicine that we voted on. I mean, in South Dakota, we spent six years putting cannabis on the ballot. We had a very big conversation with just about every resident in this state, and 70% of us voted to put access in our communities, to make it so we are accessible to patients, so patients can, and I'm going to keep saying it, so it's accessible. And if you look at the map, it is not accessible. It's not accessible for the vast majority of mid-city people, downtown people. You really have done exactly what I wrote in 26 that you were not allowed to do, and that was to make it inaccessible for patients. And so I will yield my time, and I will stand by for questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up tonight, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Greg Jamison, 6300 South Grand Prairie Drive. I just wanted to bring up one land use issue that has kind of come to my attention during this process, is the sensitive use list, including churches, that have moved into a highly commercial retail zoned area. So they've chose to relocate and put a church into an area, for example, adjacent property line to Scarlett O'Hara's, an adult-use store or place, with the highest restricted use. As you all know, they chose to move there for any number of reasons, and all probably good, but the idea that then they now cast a 1,000-foot shadow around them and all of a sudden create a restricted use for some of that land around them is odd to me. And this is what's come to light to me in this discussion, is just this concept that a church could establish a location and create then a new district. So imagine if you took 41st and Louise, the state's best intersection for retail activity, and another church were to lease some space right at the Empire Mall, that whole intersection becomes unusable for some uses and limited. And if you've paid the highest going rate possible for land, a building, and now a church moves in and casts that shadow, it just doesn't fit right, doesn't seem right. God bless them for moving into an area where they think they can do good and work, that's great, but I think they somehow forfeit that 1,000-foot shadow that they cast. So I'm just asking you to maybe think about that in this process, that that is creating, in essence, in effect, new zoning by their moving into these, and it's not just that location, but there's others. So I'm just asking you to review that, think that through. Maybe this isn't the place to stop it or amend this, but I think you should at least see that that's causing a problem for landowners and investors, and maybe there's a workaround to all of it, because I do believe that those churches are probably doing great work in those locations, and they've made some decision to do that. I don't want to stop that. It's just if they felt like going there was good for them, it really shouldn't turn to the city to all of a sudden then now create a whole new zone around them because they made that decision. I guess I don't want to say too much more, but I just want to share that as a unique item that came out of this whole discussion for me, that I hope you have seen, and maybe I wanted to make sure you did get a chance to kind of recognize that, and if there's something we could fix about it, I think it would be helpful.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Next up for public comment, please come forward, state your name and address.
Jonathan Hunt. I don't know my address. I just moved to Sioux Falls. I live in the Cascade Building.
Your head.
So math is a really good thing to look at for this, and I'm addressing John over here. You had a question, how many dispensaries do you think we would have here? So your question has not been addressed, and I'm going to try to address that. So we have an interesting, we have interesting information we're gathering in Flanrew. So we know the percentage.
Can you step a little forward into the microphone so everybody can hear? Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
So up in Flanrew, we are currently operating, and we are getting a lot of analytics from that. In those analytics, I can tell you how many people are coming from Sioux Falls, I can tell you how many people are coming from Pierre. I can tell you how many licenses have been issued, and I can tell you what percentage of licenses come back every single day. And so I did some quick math here. You have a population of about 200,000 people in the city. That's going to convert into about 60,000 licenses. At the rate that people are buying from us, you're going to see about 6,600 people buying cannabis every day in Sioux Falls. That's going to take a minimum of 22 stores at the rate that we're processing people, and we're very quick, we're doing it in about five minutes per person. Our population that's visiting us is 38% from Sioux Falls currently, so these are accurate numbers to what's going on. So what I did here, and you're probably not going to be able to see it, but I took a dime, which was almost accurate to the scale that's on this, and I laid it over all of the green spaces, assuming that every single one of these spaces would work without cross-contamination to another entity. You have 22 locations. It's not even close going to be enough to service the public. You're going to wind up causing long lines and waits for people that desperately need this medicine. I can tell you that being up in Flanrew and doing the business that we are, our top 10% have never touched cannabis ever in their entire life, and I would say our average customer is over 40 years old. We have people in their 60s, 70s, and 80s that have never even considered it, that are coming in and asking for relief from their medicines. We have people in wheelchairs that are in desperate need to get there, that it takes two or three people to even get them in our store to purchase cannabis. So I would invite you guys to ask us some questions that are relevant to this, like you guys want to know what's going to happen. We can tell you. We have the experience. We've done it in several states. Myself, I've been a consultant for 13 years. I've worked in seven different states. I've done five startup states, so I know the history of how this is going to go. I know exactly what's going to happen over the next few years, because it happens the same way every single location. We're not unique, it's not going to be different. It's going to roll out the same way here as it does everywhere else. So I would invite you guys to make it seamless, and the 1,000-foot rule from all sensitive use is excessive, and it's going to be limiting. We couldn't do that to Stanford, and he sponsors everything. He wouldn't stand here and accept it, and I feel like we're kind of taking the same position. We need to be able to get medicine to the people that need it. I understand that you guys are not familiar with it, and it might be scary. It's professional, it's helpful, and it's necessary. And we would appreciate if you could reconsider these zones, because it doesn't work, and it will stifle the industry, it will help perpetuate the black market, and it will limit people's access to what they need. If you have any questions, I'll be here to answer anything you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you for your time tonight. Further comments tonight, please come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Rose Grant, 210 West 24th Street. Reason I'm here tonight is to talk about accessibility. I have kind of drawn the circle here, which encompasses a lot of the town as a dispensary My husband and I, we own Wheelchair Express, and I will tell you that most of the disabled people, probably 80% or more that we take, live in this circle. And in that circle, there's quite a number of long-term living facilities, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 that I could remember, four hospital systems, several group homes. There are people living downtown in the Tower David, the YMCA, Beetle Plaza, apartments on South Main, so a lot of people in wheelchairs. I would also want to read to you this little bit from the U.S. Department of Justice about both the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Title II of Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, impose an affirmative duty on local government to make reasonable accommodations, in effect modifications and exceptions in their zoning laws and other land use regulations and practices when such accommodations may be necessary to afford a person with a disability an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling. So, you know, this is prescription product here, and, you know, it would be ridiculous to have all the pharmacies out here, and it would be ridiculous to have all the dispensaries out here. I would urge you to think about just doing away with these distance requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment tonight, please come forward at this time, state your name and address
Paul Binkford with the City Attorney's Office. I just wanted to add a couple of things to what Mr. Bieber had said. He had given a pretty comprehensive list of different discussions that were had about distances and those kind of things. I just wanted to make one thing clear, on the conditional use that is currently an option on the proposal that's before you today, the 500 feet to 999 feet, one of the things is that state law requires that it be 1,000 feet from a public or private school. So a conditional use wouldn't be able to be granted if it was that distance from a school. The one additional thing that had been discussed as part of the discussions, that is not in the proposal before you, there was a discussion about whether there would be tiers of licenses granted, one being, the first tier being over 1,000 feet, and then the second tier being the conditional use permits, being able to apply at a later time. That is also not before you, but just as Mr. Bieber talked about the fact that of different things that were discussed, I wanted to make sure you knew that was discussed, and wanted to make sure that you knew that even on the conditional use permit, conditional use permit won't be able to be granted by state law if it's within 1,000 feet of a public or private school.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. Further comment tonight, please? Public input for anybody, please come forward at this time. Last call for public input. If we see none, we'll close the floor to public input. We'll look for commissioner action.
I guess I have a question for either the city, the business owners, whoever, but is it possible to have these prescriptions, the medication mailed to the patients? That's not an option whatsoever. Can anyone elaborate on that or share?
Somebody would like to come forward and address that? We'd appreciate it.
Emmett Reistroffer again. Great question. I wish we could, but no, that's regulated by federal law, you know, postal, so we're not able to participate in that. There are a number of states where we can deliver it by driving it to a patient's house, but that's not being discussed right now here.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioners, further questions? Otherwise, we do not have a motion on the floor at this time. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
A move for approval for the sake of discussion.
I'll second.
Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Commissioner, discussion on this item tonight. Somebody does need to start.
Mr. Chair, the biggest thing that I keep hearing is distance, distance, distance. I mean, it, I mean, there's beliefs out there, different beliefs. One thing that, you know, I'm not a proponent of this type of use, but there are people that basically need this, and I get what you guys are saying. And it's a tough one, because it is kind of limiting, you know, how people get access to it. It was a great point that you brought up, just basically by wheelchairs. I mean, a lot of our older population and people in need live in the central area, and there is a lot of non places where they can put it. So, and it was a great point by Greg that I never thought of, that a church moves into an area, like, that's maybe something that we kind of need to look at on that, because that could be an issue and is an issue for the adult industry over there, that they probably can't do anything else. So that's something that we need to look at, but I really think that we kind of need to look at the distance for these guys, even though I know a conditional use permit will do that at 500 feet, but it's something that I think we need to discuss a little bit more about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukey. Further commissioner discussion tonight?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
My big takeaway from Jason's report is the effort that's gone into addressing a myriad of issues and requirements. I think the Attorney General's comment on the ballot about the 95 sections containing numerous provisions that are going to require clarification, you know, is representative of the situation we're in, and we've heard about the evolving process. We saw an ordinance with just dispensary, and it was decided that testing would also be added. They're using rules and regulations that they believe respond to the requirements and expectations that our community has. And I think we're at a point where we need to allow this to continue so we can move forward and may find there are other things that we're going to have to do based on experience, and those may be more restrictive. They may involve more city responsibility. We're not sure, but the one thing we are sure of is we're going to take care of Sioux Falls, and that's the expectation that we live under. We're here trying to decide what's best for Sioux Falls, and I think we have to depend on the advice of our planning staff in this situation, and I'll vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Paulson. Commissioners, further discussion on this item tonight?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've thought a lot about this one, too, and hearing about all of the things that the task force has worked hard in discussions, including with public input. I really respect a group that can get together and make some pretty substantive decisions for the whole community and make some recommendations, so I respect that process. There's also, when we consider about our current zoning references, they're all tied to sensitive use, and there was a lot of discussion about that tonight, I appreciate that. But a lot of what our zoning plan is currently built on is that definition of sensitive use. To me, it makes sense not to redefine a term that's already built in. There's some logic to putting this parallel to some of the rest of the zoning ordinances we already have in place, at least to start with, as a community. we already have in place, at least to start with, as Commissioner Paulson said. And then when I think about parks, parks are definitely a sensitive use. There are a wide range of use, and so I disagreed with one comment that parks shouldn't be a sensitive use, because they have always been a sensitive use. That's the way we've treated them for decades, and so I think that really helps to reinforce that idea of what sensitive use really is for this community. And then I also think about the process we have for conditional use permits. The reason that you can reduce kind of the default position of 1,000 feet down to 500 is because there is public input, and that's a really important step for the city of Sioux Falls. It allows people to come and address us as we're considering a conditional use permit. That automatically puts it onto an agenda. It automatically puts it on to the City Council agenda so that there can be further public input and hopefully wisdom that comes from that public input and the officials that are making these tough decisions for the whole community. We're all about trying to protect the community, both the people that want access, as well as the other people in the community that may not want that next door to them, for whatever reason that might be. And so that public input element, to me, is really important, and ultimately, the sensitive use and the conditional use permit helps to create a mechanism that allows for that public input and continual kind of adjustment of things. So when it makes sense to be 500 feet, that will be the decision that comes out of that. So I have confidence in the system. I like how it reinforces the rest of our zoning ordinance, and I'm gonna be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Irvin. Other commissioners tonight?
Mr. Chair, I was just gonna say well put. That was really well said.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukey. Commissioners, any further discussion tonight on this item? I see no further discussion. We'll take a vote on this item. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. That item has passed 6 to 0. Denise, please read the next item.
Item 6 is public input on, pardon me. Item 6 is public input on non-agenda items. Five-minute comment period per individual.
We've reached the point of our agenda where we take public input on non-agenda items. Anybody here tonight that would like to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda? See no general public input. Any new business, Jason?
Yeah, one quick item. I just wanted to introduce you and welcome Kevin Smith, who's our new Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Was unable to attend the briefing yesterday where we could have introduced him to you. He's kind of coming in to really run more of our day-to-day operations within our whole department. Kevin, if you don't know him, he worked in the City Planning Department and in Public Works Department, and then has been in the private sector for about six and a half years. So I think you're gonna probably be seeing a lot of him at our Planning Commission meetings and doing really the day-to-day planning stuff within our office. I just wanted to introduce you to him and welcome him back to the city, so.
Thank you, Jason. Welcome back, Kevin. Commissioners, any new business? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjournments, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. We are adjourned.[1792.36][1792.36][applause]